...children and adults of our community and to those whose opportunities for education and culture have been limited by the necessities and circumstances of their lives. Do you even know what the Troy Library contains? Have any of you ever even been there? Do you even have a library card? Well, let me give you an idea of what that building is. A library is a grand place where books live. A library can be a magical place of the imagination. It's a great place to find almost every imaginable topic. You can check books out for free. You have an untold number of books and other literary resources, all free of charge. Our library has many inviting spots to read, whether you enjoy a comfortable chair, a table and chair, or our friends at the library coffee chat. We have great mini places to read or work. Our library has superb lighting, so you won't ruin your eyesight while you're reading. If you have problems reading, you can look up words in any number of dictionaries or encyclopedias. The resources are illuminating. We have access to book experts. We have great libr-- I'm sorry, my mouth is really dry. We have great librarians who are professionally trained and can usually help us find anything we're looking for. Our librarians point us in the right direction, answer questions, and even give suggestions on books that we might be interested in reading. Whatever our purpose is for visiting the library, we can also enjoy participating in any of the library events or activities. Our library hosts guest lecturers, music recitals, and poetry and reading groups. We celebrate National Book Month, have activities for children and Artist of the Month displays. Our library is a great stress reducer. Just walking down the rows of books has a way of relaxing even the most stressed-out individual. Try thumbing through a few books and you'll find yourself lost in the magical world of words. Perhaps it's the quiet atmosphere, the stillness, the presence of the books, whatever the case may be, visiting that library can make a difference in your whole outlook. At the library, you can read about love and life, freedom and hope, faith and happiness, and tragedy. You can read about death, humanity, and compassion. Books open a world of possibility to you. With a library, you can educate your mind and fill the depths of your soul. You can become the kind of person you want to be. We should all support our library. It has books, CDs, magazines, newspapers, and more, and it's free. During the stressful economic time, what better four-letter word than free? Reading is an addiction, and you won't go to jail when you need a fix.
Okay, I need to caution you to wrap up because it's a three-minute time. Please.
So, on my last sentence in closing, all I can say is, get a library card and read. And I do support the tax increase. Maybe not necessarily on the norm, but with our property taxes going down, it's going to wash out, so we're not paying extra. And we need the services. You know, it is what makes our city. So, I hope you keep it open. All of it. Thank you.
Before the next speaker, I'll call the next five people. Wayne Stutzman, Mary Ann Bernardi, Thomas Burke, Barbara Chambers, and Janice Daniels. In that order, please. This is Alice? Allison? Yes. Move to the mic here. Thank you.
My name is Alison Iceman. I've lived in Troy all 22 years of my life. I'm active in our community and use the facilities that are at risk of being lost. It's recently been brought to my attention that the citizens of Troy might not get a chance to vote on whether or not the museum, nature center, and library and community center stay open. This would be a great tragedy because these facilities really help to create the community that we live in. Everyone my age has and is still using these facilities. We all remember our first trip to the museum and the excitement of getting dressed up and sitting in Poppleton Schoolhouse. Remember trips to the nature center and getting to taste the maple syrup candy and hiking around in the woods. Many of us started working out and also hanging out at the community center once it opened and have spent countless hours doing research and studying at the library. All these places have helped to create such a sense of community that I have friends who now live as far away as Alaska who still consider Troy their home. We have had a community that people miss when they are not here, and if the facilities are lost, that sense of community will also be lost. That sense of community is what makes the city of Troy more than just a city. The people of Troy deserve the right to vote on whether or not they want to help save their facilities. And I know that if given the chance to make this decision, they'll want to preserve their city and the sense of community that it brings. Thank you.
Next speaker. And did I call Sandy Magnus? Sandy, you signed up before on the other. Did you want to be in this, on this item? Yes, would you come in line, Sandy? Thank you. Yes, Wayne?
Hi, Mayor, and council members. Thank you very much for this opportunity. There's a lot to agree with on both sides of everybody, everyone's comments tonight. You know, it's a very tough job you have up there, and a couple people will be leaving, and I appreciate their service, and I wanted to say that to both of you. One thing I would like to say, that I'm sure that this ballot is probably going to end up on the election. And I would hope that it is printed to a point where everyone can understand what they're voting for, exactly what the 1.9 mil or whatever it will end up being, exactly what that amount of money constitutes for each and every homeowner. The 23% or 29% increase, I have no idea where all these numbers are coming from. But I have gone to two different forums for potential council members that are running for these seats that are vacant or will be vacant. And some of the comments that were made there were fighting taxes and concessions that the city is looking for. And I'm here to say that it starts at the top, and I heard that from some of the people that are running. And I think that the city manager should start by voluntarily putting his retirement money, $75,000, on hold until his tenure of employment is over. The other thing is, and this goes back to one item that was on the agenda earlier, but it creates some money that obviously impacts us all. And I asked a couple of people up here today, or tonight during the break, about this amount of money that the council consented to pay on this issue here with... Where is it? Troy versus Muchando. How much money was that, that we actually ended up paying, or however it worked out?
Yes?
Mayor, I can answer that question. The amount... I'm sorry, I don't have the memo right in front of me. Actually, I do. The total amount that is the final just compensation in the case is $609,000, excuse me, $375.
There's $609,000. Also, you indicated, Mayor, the city of Troy portion of the tax increase would be zero? Did you say that earlier, or did I misunderstand?
No. Two things. First of all, when we have a lawsuit and the lawsuit is settled, then we must pay the money. Okay. Secondly, the chart is the chart that Councilor Kirwin referred to, which gives the city of Troy tax bill for the average residential property for each of the five years going out, because I proposed doing this just for five years, and then that would be the sunset of it. And with the decrease in property values, taxes going down, there would not be an increase to the average taxpayer. Okay? Is that what you're asking me?
I guess. You'd indicated that even if the 1.9 mil passes, the city of Troy portion tax would be zero? That was your comment. That's what I understood.
I'm sorry. That's not the comment that I made.
Okay. I misunderstood then.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilor H. Barker?
We should point out that the city manager and the city attorney have taken a 5% pay cut already.
Right. And I think that some of those things that people are talking about, we will talk about at the study session to show you the cuts that have been made and the cuts that are already suggested. Yes, ma'am? Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Chambers. I've lived in Troy for nine years, and I'm here to speak about the museum. My job is a code enforcement officer or an ordinance officer in the city of Claussen. And I was reading over the ordinance in the city of Troy which designates that a historic district which we have as the museum cannot be closed. The Act, in 1970, Michigan passed a Public Act 169, and it was to implement and stabilize historic areas or historic districts. They adopted it so that the areas could be implemented and kept up. The ordinance number is 399.210 that says nothing shall be construed to prevent ordinary maintenance or repair of a resource within a historic district. So that means that all the buildings that are at the museum, should someone decide that it has to be closed down or it has to be heat-turned-off, would destroy a Michigan ordinance demand that all of these buildings be kept intact. So, as an ordinance officer, that I go through my job, I'm just citing the ordinance for the information that could be needed. I'm on the committee of the Historic District Commission, and we have a lot of children come through there, we have people come before us, and we do well. I believe we're keeping the museum for the city. It's a lovely place. I live two blocks away from it and quite familiar with it, so I hope it stays. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Tom Burke. I'm a 32- or 33-year resident of Troy. I'd like to start by saying that I'm not suggesting we never need a tax increase. I'm suggesting it's irresponsible to talk about this now. Here's why. It's sad to see this issue, which is very important to Troy, being politicized and brought up at this time, right before a November 3 election. And we're asking people to kind of take sides between those who support it and not when this is all a bunch of hocus-pocus. So, why am I saying this? First off, everything that we're basing this on is on a worst-case scenario, all on estimation, probably even could be called speculation. And the worst-case scenario is a quote from the city manager. "We don't have nearly enough facts." We've had hundreds of slides and documents tossed at the citizens in a very short period of time, but they are beginning to catch on. Second, the way this is getting communicated, or perhaps not being communicated. A number of people have come up here and said they suggest they are in favor of this proposal because this will save our police, save our library, save our museums. And if we pass this, little orphan Annie can come out and sing, the sun will come out tomorrow, and everything will be just like it is today when it couldn't be farther from the fact. The gap, the difference that the city manager has presented for 2015 is more than $20 million. 1.9% or 1.9 mils generates $7 million. Two-thirds of all the cuts that are going to take place are still going to have to happen. So, understand, you want them to be there. Don't talk about 1.9% or 23%. Talk about 100% increase in tax. If you want to be honest, get the right numbers out there. Third, if you pass this, you'll make the situation worse than make it better. And why's that? There is a logical way to go about this kind of economic reform. First, you do all the things that have been brought up. You do the cost cuts. You consolidate. You privatize. You merge functions. You get everything to the bare bones. You do the most continuous improvement, re-engineered process that the city can... You get the city lean. The second, we've talked about concessions. You go to the unions and you get the concessions in contract form. You don't speculate. Now, the words in the documents are, "We can't guarantee that we'll get wage concessions." If you pass this, I think you can guarantee you will not get wage concessions because you will put a boatload of new money into the city budget, and a lot of those union contracts have arbitration clauses. And those arbitration clauses take it out of the hands of the negotiators and throw it into an arbitrator. And the arbitrator decides on two factors. What is comparable pay? And unless all the other communities cut the salaries first, you will not win on comparable pay. And the second one is ability to pay. And since you now have a bunch of tax money, you will have the ability to pay. So what we will get is not concessions, we will get pay increases. That will make the matter worse. The key is, once again, we may need a tax increase. We certainly don't want to consider it now until we get our ducks in order. Lastly, we talked about this, the cost of an election and a dollar bill. Well, the taxes are already raised, so it's not, we're going to raise everybody's taxes a buck to pay for this election. It's going to come out of a budget that's already hurting. $90,000, $120,000, $150,000, you decide what the cost is. The cost is about the salary of a police officer. So, let's decide that we want an election and we're going to cut a police officer. That doesn't make any sense to me. We had 100 people send in emails. Big deal. We had three groups and hundreds of emails saying that we shouldn't have passed the last charter amendment that requires the citizens to vote. The mayor was an adamant supporter that that's what the citizens wants and they'll turn this down. Instead, the citizens voted 70/30 that they wanted to vote. You're out of touch. And this is a total waste of money. It should be done at the right time, when all the facts and all our ducks and all the things can be, our house can be put in order. Right now, we're in disarray. Thank you.
The next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Janice Daniels, and I have to work two jobs to make my ends meet. One of them, I'm an associate broker for Century 21 Town and Country in Troy. I live in Troy. And I don't have statistics with me, but I think we can all agree that statistics can be used to prove whatever we want to prove. I don't think I need to prove that we have an unprecedented number of vacant homes in this city, in this county, in this region, in this country right now. We have an unprecedented number of people who have their homes on the market for lease because they can't sell their home. They don't want to be landlords. They want to sell their home. They can't. We are probably, 90% of us have our mortgages upside down. My property is not worth what my mortgage is, so I couldn't even sell my place. I've lost, I'd say, $60,000 in equity, and I have a $30,000 upside-down mortgage. The last thing I need to do is have my taxes raised, and I feel that's the way it is for all of us. First of all, if you tax something more, you get more of it. You'll see more foreclosures. You'll see more lost jobs. You'll see more people fleeing the city. We're not competing against just Sterling Heights or Claussen or Rochester Hills. We're competing against Atlanta, Georgia, Tennessee, California. We have to think smart in our city. We have a great city, and we want to continue to do so. The best thing to do to bring people into the city is to lower taxes. Lower taxes. My property value is going down. That doesn't mean I want my taxes to stay the same. I want them to go down. Put more money in my pocket. Maybe we could hire more people at Century 21 Town and Country to sell more homes. We need to think about reducing taxes. You can drive down any major street in this city and you will see businesses with "for lease" signs. Our businesses are fleeing the city because they can't stay in business. It's not because their taxes are too low. It would be more likely that it's because their taxes are too high. Lower the taxes on the businesses. Bring more investment into the city. Create groups of people that want to fix some of these vacant homes that are in disarray that have been torn apart by people who didn't care about taking care of their investment. We could all work together to make these houses good again and then promote them for sale around the state, if you will, by lowering our taxes and making this a more business-friendly community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann, the sequence got out of order. I think you were before Sandy. Yes. Sorry.
It's okay.
Your name was here, Sandy had signed up, and then she signed up in the wrong place, so she had to go.
I was debating whether I should...
Go ahead.
If this is the right spot.
This is the right spot.
Okay.
Go.
I'll just reiterate two of my points. Well, before I do that, I'd just like to say that I hope that everyone in council and everyone here is aware that salaries are at the lowest point they've ever been in our country in 19 years. 19 years, think about it. There comes a time when, you know, we can't shoulder this redirecting of expenses to the resident. At some point in time, the resident just simply cannot do it. Just simply cannot. And the two points that I will not rest, I will not rest until this question is answered. And I hope that sometime tonight that this will be addressed. This is the question, and Councilwoman Beltrami brought it up. And I will never rest until I hear the answer. And that is, why is our city manager, John Zierlag, insisting that we make up five years of supposed shortfalls in the first one or two years? I want to know the answer to that. It doesn't make sense. First of all, the shortcut, who... I've said this before when it came before you. How in the world can we be clairvoyant enough to know what will happen five years from now? It doesn't make any sense to me at all. And the other point that I think might fit in here is about the capital fund. When Mr. Zierlag said that he would not recommend that we utilize the capital fund, what that tells me is that you're just going to continue spending. Wasteful spending is a luxury that we cannot afford any longer. We couldn't afford it before when times were good, and we certainly can't afford it now. And I say that if things are so bad that we're talking about losing our library, our museum, our police force, and on and on, and our departments, then if it's really that bad, then yes, we have to look at the capital fund. We can't be building anything. You know, you don't put home improvements on your home and add additions to your home when you can't put food on the table. And if things are as bad as we're being told they are, which I suspect they aren't, but if they are, then yes, the capital fund needs to be looked at. We can't have all these silos of money. You know, oh, we can't touch this money because it has this name on it. And we can't touch this money because it has a DDA name on it. Oh, no. That's over. Now that things are supposedly this bad, everything should be on the table. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker, Sandy Magnus?
Hi, my name is Sandy Magnus. I've lived in Troy for 40 years. I love the city. I love volunteering for the city, and I love being part of the city. I'm speaking on behalf of a special group of people in the city. Those are our students, especially our teenagers. I feel that we don't have a downtown here. It's been brought to my attention, if we don't have, by students, if we don't have a community center, where can they go? Where can our students go? Do they have to go to the malls to find something to do? If they are looking for something to do, are they going to get in trouble when they are looking for something to do? We need our library. We need our community center. And just so these kids, we don't want them to get in trouble. We want them to have places to go. Also, cutting our police force is an invitation to crime. The best way to prevent this is to place the question of a mileage increase on our ballot. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. That concludes those that signed up on the item. In addition to this, we have the study memo, the information that was provided in the study. Council, do you wish to proceed with that, or do you need to take a five-minute? Do you need to take a break before we go to the study item? Only five minutes, though, this time, folks. It is 10:04, so we'll come back in five minutes. It is 10:04, so we'll come back in five minutes. There was quick five minutes. The folks that are still present and those that are at home watching, because it's only 10:10 instead of midnight, timing seems to be well. I think one thing I'd like to say is that I appreciate all of the audience members being so efficient lining up, coming up to speak and everything. That seems to work really well because people have their say, and yet it moves it along so that we can move forward. So thank you to all of you who did that, and all of you who just listened and didn't speak because you want to know the information, too. So we're back now for the study item, which is the policy options to lessen the impact of reduced services and mitigate workforce reduction. Yes, Councilwoman Beltrami, I see you puzzled.
Madam Mayor, before we move on,
Yes.
there was an understandable concern by Mr. Shepke about the Historical Society newsletter
Oh, yes.
that went out explaining the plight of the museum. And I want to clarify, it is my understanding that the Historical Society newsletter is paid for by the Historical Society, not by tax dollars. Is that true?
I'll have to ask either Mrs. Campbell or Mr. Lamorato whether or not that's true. Just for the record, I do have an administrative memorandum that I had signed over a month ago indicating that there can be no political activity or use of city funds for candidates.
And that's why I believe that it was paid for by the society, but Mrs. Campbell is here.
Yes, Mrs. Beltrami, the Historical Society pays for their newsletter. There's absolutely no city funds involved in it. They are a separate nonprofit corporation. They have their own treasury.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? Some of the other items, I'm sure, are going to come up with this part.
But that was the one thing I didn't see a survey to find out.
Mr. Zerlag?
I had written a letter to you dated October 7th. Is this microphone working okay? And it's about three pages long, but if I could read it, it answers, I think, almost all the questions that were advanced this evening. It's written to the council. The topic is policy options to lessen the impact of reduced services and mitigate workforce reduction. On September 9th, 2009, I issued a memorandum to you entitled "Six-Year Organizational Restructuring Plan for the City of Troy." I identified the years as being FY 9-10 through FY 14-15. And it's worth restating that the options identified in that memorandum to lessen the impact of reduced services follow. So I sent this back in September 9th. There are six things that we can do to lessen the impact of the matrix that I indicated on September 9th, which was, if we did nothing, what would our deficit be? And those six things are five that the city council can do, and one thing that I can do as city manager. And the one thing that I can do as manager with the help of management staff is to seek employee concessions, and I'm currently working on that. The other five things the city council has to do, or has to consider. One is that they can ask the voters if they want to approve a general fund millage increase. Two, they can ask the voters if they want to approve a millage increase for a specific use, like a library. Three, they can establish an independent library board, separate from the city of Troy's general fund, and levy up to one mil thereof for the operation and maintenance. And that can be done without voter approval. That's one of your options, although the library would no longer be part and parcel of the City of Troy organization. Four, the city council can authorize the use of the budget stabilization fund, fund balance, and increase some administrative fees. Five, city council can transfer some funds from general capital to general operating. I then indicate that looking at those options from a big picture or policy perspective, here's where we are. Given factors beyond our control, we now have an economically unsustainable organization. Without any changes in how we operate, our deficit for this current fiscal year in the general fund is $1.6 million. Next year, fiscal year 10-11, it's $6.2 million. The year after that, 11-12, it's six more million dollars. And that comes to about $14 million in lost revenue. And we're confident that our degree of accuracy is about 98%. For this fiscal year, next fiscal year, and the fiscal year thereafter, it's $14 million. We won't be as accurate in the last three fiscal years of our predicted loss of approximately $9 million, but we think we're close. And Oakland County government, through Mr. Bob Datto, as well as private sector experts, agree with that assessment. And that's why we had to essentially upfront or upload cuts that were proposed. The council did nothing to resolve the situation in this year and the next two subsequent years, because that's $14 million of the total 22 that's projected. I'm also seeking employee concessions, but I can't guarantee what they'll be. Same goes with layoffs through privatization and regionalization. We're estimating about a 40% savings in this area, which comes with a reduced level of service. But again, we will not know the actual savings until about a year after implementation and audits are performed. And as you know, layoffs will occur through privatization and regionalization, regardless of what happens to a decision or non-decision to ask the voters to decide this issue of a millage rate increase. Jumping to the letter I had written on September 9th, we're going to privatize, to varying degrees, the following departments, with or without a vote, or with or without a successful millage campaign. And that would be the Building Department, the Engineering Department, a portion of Public Works, a portion of Parks and Recreation, a portion of the Human Services Department, and the Real Estate and Development Department. In addition, we're going to regionalize part of our assessing department as the Oakland County Equalization Department can perform some of those functions. And we're also looking at reductions of employees in the Attorney's Office, the City Clerk's Office, purchasing, and finance. Now, this is done regardless of what happens with any millage increase. And those savings are already baked into our numbers. The Downtown Development Authority cannot help the general fund, nor can the sale or privatization of the golf courses assist us in any appreciable degree. And those were given through a PowerPoint presentation over the last two meetings when we discussed this matter. I indicate that you can ask the voters if they wish to approve a general fund millage increase. That's up to you. If you don't, then Assistant Manager John Lamorato and I will present to you two budgets, one for fiscal year 10-11 and one for fiscal year 11-12. The first budget will include a reduction of $6.2 million of expenditures. And after we cut $6.2 million next fiscal year, and that's on top of cutting $1.6 million this fiscal year, when we're done with that, we're going to come back and cut six more million dollars for fiscal year 11-12. That's not a threat or a scare tactic. That's what I have to do to balance a budget. If I don't balance a budget, the state comes in and balances it for us. I also mentioned that the reduced level of service options identified in my September 9th memorandum do make use of the budget stabilization fund, but not a fund balance. So we did use, in our model, $300,000 per year, every year, for five years. That's $1.5 million, and I think we have $1.8 million in the fund. And that is pretty much where we are. I was asked to delve into the issue of fund balance utilization and the possibility of transferring some funds from general capital to general operating. First, I'll address the issue of going to a 15% of fund balance, because I was asked to do that at one of our meetings. And on a fiscal year basis, I indicate what the additional one-time revenues would be. For this fiscal, for fiscal year 10-11, it's $1.8 million. For fiscal year 11-12, it's .6 million. Fiscal year 12-13, it's .1 million. Fiscal year 13-14, it's .2 million. Fiscal year 14-15, it's .1 million. And again, in my September 9th letter, I did not make utilization of the fund balance because that is a council directive not to utilize fund balance to balance a budget. If you want to change that direction, well, that's up to you. Using the attached matrix, which I really can't show at this time, but it's part of my letter, which is a public document, which is also part of the PowerPoint presentation, we could reduce the projected $21 million shortfall between revenues and expenditures by about $2.8 million over the next five years by reducing the fund balance to 15% every year. And that brings us now to the policy decision, or brings you essentially, of eliminating capital projects in favor of delaying layoffs on the operational side of the ledger. In other words, you can transfer funds from general capital to general operating, and I broke those projects down into three types of capital programming. The first type is infrastructure maintenance, and I call that pay me now or pay me later. The most important general capital fund element in this category is local and major road maintenance and reconstruction. Other items here include water distribution systems, sewer collection systems, sidewalks, bridges, and public facilities. Now, the water and sewer distribution system come from a different fund. The major component in the general capital are roads, major roads and local roads. We have to repair and maintain, and Larry will know this more than me, I think it's over 300 miles of streets in the city of Troy. And for the past at least 10 years, we should have been allocating about $5 million a year just to keep roads in what would be called adequate condition. We have not done so for the past several years. So I do not and do not recommend taking any monies out of general capital for road improvements to general fund. There's also economic development enhancement projects. And an example of that is the Transit Center. Other examples are projects that provide a competitive edge over other cities in terms of attracting and retaining jobs and businesses. The third kind of improvement for capital that comes out of general fund are quality of life improvements. And examples here are the trail system and civic center site improvements. I do believe that quality of life improvements, which also incorporate our existing library, community center, museum, and nature center, also provide a competitive edge in terms of having people aspire to live in a particular community. In my letter of September 9th, 2009, I indicated that capital funding allocated for road improvements should not be transferred to the general operating fund. This is because a good road system is essential for public safety, light prevention, and even quality of life elements. I mentioned that I'll discuss more on that later on, but first want to talk about the Transit Center, civic center site improvements, and the trail system. You can pull the plug on the Transit Center and save about $1.3 million. Additionally, reserves for the trail system of $2 million could also be deployed to other areas. So too, the civic center reserve fund of $1.1 million for quality of life amenities could be expunged with those funds being channeled elsewhere, i.e. to the general fund. Those three projects alone yield $4.4 million. And so your policy question becomes, do you want to cancel those projects? And what are the ramifications thereof of canceling those projects? If you do want to cancel the projects, do you want to allocate the funding to general operating or unfunded infrastructure needs in the general capital budget? In other words, roads. I ask if this means that you should scratch economic development and quality of life projects in favor of shoring up road improvements? Or do you want to take funding from those programs to delay layoffs? I mentioned that layoffs would be delayed because a capital project is a one-time infusion of money. And to give an example, if you wanted to, say, not purchase a fire truck for $1 million to delay the layoffs of 10 or 12 people somewhere in the city, a year later, when the revenue line is still declining, you have to lay off those people, and you don't have the fire truck. But again, that's a policy decision. That's up to you. And I wanted to make another point, and that was the refuse fund was in trouble this current fiscal year to the tune of $360,000. And a transfer from general capital was authorized by the city council to balance that account. And it's going to be worse next fiscal year. The last thing I mentioned is please advise how you wish to proceed.
Mr. Zerlag?
Oh, Your Honor, I'm sorry. I forgot to mention one thing.
Okay.
There's a matrix on the board that I don't think anybody could read.
That's what I was just going to go to.
And that was developed by Mr. Lamorato, our assistant manager in charge of finance, as well as Mr. Nino Macari, our city assessor. So if one of those two gentlemen could explain the chart, I think you'll probably want to look at the one that talks about the 1.9 millage increase and explain what that means. That would be appreciated.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council? Thought I was done here. Guess that's not going to happen. First off, I should mention that the chart that's in front of you is neither proactive or reactive. We were asked to supply this information. I think it's critical information for the council to have at this juncture. It specifies the change, and I think at the very top of it is still showing the change in taxes for the average taxpayer, average residential taxpayer over the five-year life with no change in the millage rate at all. You'd see just in city taxes, it's about a $392 reduction overall in taxes for those five years, if you work your way down. And I think maybe we should just stick with the 1.9 mil because that's the resolution that's on the table. You could see that even with the 1.9 mil increase, coupled with the reductions, dramatic reductions in taxable value that we're going to experience in the residential class alone, even with the 1.9 mil increase over the five-year term, there's still $147.85 savings for the average residential taxpayer. Compared to no change at all in the millage rate, it's a 13.28% difference in those two. The chart also breaks down one mil, one and a half mil, and two mils. And again, just as a reminder, the two mil would require a charter amendment because you can't levy more than 10 by the existing charter. So there are big differences in the taxes here. And realistically, the big hit is always in the first year because that's the biggest taxable value that we have. So it's going to generate the most revenue. But every year after that, the taxes actually drop. And that's critical information for you to have. I can answer any specific questions. I know there's a lot of data up there, but it's relatively clear-cut. It breaks it down by year, the change by year, and then the cumulative change in total taxes.
Okay. Councilwoman Brumkin, you have a question for Mr. Macari?
I do, thank you. Okay, and there is a lot of data up there, but what I'm hearing you, and I want to make sure I understand you, the idea, you know, the general idea here. What I'm hearing you say is that every homeowner in Troy, the taxable value is going down. And it's going to come down. It's not going to go up. Because I'm hearing a wash, but I'm not convinced that all the homes in Troy, the taxable value is not either staying the same or still going up a little.
Okay.
Because you're making a general statement as if everybody's taxes are going to go down, so it's going to be a wash.
I can say with some confidence that this coming year, virtually everyone in the city of Troy, every homeowner in the city of Troy, will see some reduction in their taxes, okay? Not all of them are going to see 12%, which is the average decrease in taxable value that the city is going to have. So again, we're working with averages here, and the chart specifies the average taxable value. Now, that being said, there are several subdivisions in the city that are going to see considerably more than a 12% decrease. And again, in order to get the average, if you think of your bell curve, about half are going to be on the right, and about half are going to be on the left. But all should see some reduction in taxes this year. So that means that when they meet in the middle, the average reduction is going to be about $158. That's the average reduction. Some people will see a $50 decrease, and some people will see a $400 decrease. But the average will be about $158.
Other questions, Mr. Macari? Councilwoman Kirwan?
Again, on the five-year, as I said, the first year you feel it most, correct?
Absolutely.
And the percentage you show there is what? Is it 3.39?
Oh, let's see, 1.9. Yeah, 3.39.
Is the change.
That would be the increase, yeah. With the 1.9.
Mr. Lucari or any member of staff, we heard a lot tonight about 23 or 29%. I don't know if you recall hearing that, I'm wondering if you didn't.
And the way the math works out there, that's when you divide the 1.9% by the 9.28 mils. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the actual change is 20.3%, not 23%, it's 20.3%. That'd be the change in the overall milage rate. That's not the change in the overall taxes, because again, we're dealing with an average here. But if you're just comparing the milage rate, it's 1.9%, I believe is 20.3% of 9.28.
But for this purpose, the percentage change is 3.39.
For the average taxpayer, yes.
For the average taxpayer.
Yes, that's correct.
Mayor?
On the same point.
Councilman Eisenbacher?
What is the percentage change in general fund tax levy?
There should be about a 12% reduction in taxes, and I'm not sure, I'd have to ask Mr. Lamorato what the taxes are of the total general fund.
I mean, compared to the 1.9 mils?
Again, I'd have to ask John, I'm not really sure.
I, using the same formula where you take 1.9 divided by 6.5, which is, I believe, our current general fund milage, I believe that's where you get 29%.
Oh, I'm sorry, I understand. I don't know, I don't have my calculator, I can't.
If you're analyzing just in terms of general fund revenue?
Absolutely.
It's a 29% increase. If you're talking in terms of the whole city milage rate of 9.28, then it's the other number.
Exactly. And the reason for the calculation, though, because the chart that's in front of you shows the milage rate at 9.28, it's the total levy of the city. It includes refuse, it includes debt, it includes general fund. Because when people look at their tax bill, they want to know what the city's charging them, and they don't care where the funds are going.
We had the other chart, which is in the report here, and that is the comparison of the local milage rates to comparable cities.
Yes, yes ma'am.
Do you want to speak to that?
No, I'm familiar with that. I did generate that chart. I don't have it on the computer for you, unfortunately.
Right. And my question is, even with a 1.9 increase, where would we fall to comparable cities? Because I'm looking at...
I believe that drops us just three spaces.
Okay.
Right now, just West Bloomfield, I believe, has a lower milage rate of a city of comparable size, although they're considerably more residential than we are. And I believe that only drops us two more spots.
Okay.
So technically, we would be second as far as communities of our size, and I believe the 11.28 drops, or 1.8 drops us two more spots.
Okay.
So we could be the third or fourth lowest.
Okay.
Bearing in mind that that chart that you're looking at contains several villages and townships which we're not really comparing ourselves to, because they don't have to provide the same services that we provide.
Right. And there've been articles in the paper about some communities, cities or townships, looking at what their decrease in revenue is and what they would do and if they might propose a milage.
Several, I was at continuing education last week, and several of the assessors that I spoke with said that their communities that have milage available to them are looking for increases in the milage along with concessions. I was watching the news right before I came here tonight, and West Bloomfield township is having a special meeting tonight to try and reopen their police and fire contracts because they're looking at a $7 million reduction in the 1112 budget. So they're looking for some concessions there.
So we are not the only community that is...
We're not alone. Most communities have not addressed this issue yet, but better to be proactive, I would think.
Yes, okay. Other questions from either Mr. Lucari or other staff from council? Councilman Fleming? Is this for Mr. Lucari or someone else? Can he?
No, I don't think so, probably Mr. Lamorato.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Ms. Lucari, thank you for clearing up the 29%. Excellent.
Councilman Fleming, remember the people at the back said they couldn't hear me for real...
Okay, can you hear me back there?
Yeah, when you move up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The last meeting, we had a discussion about the pension plan and the shortfall in the pension plan. I think it's worth noting again, the situation that we're in and the expenses that we're incurring over the next five years to catch up the pension plan. If I may ask Mr. Lamorato again to repeat that shortfall, I think, from the actuary report for the people that are listening, because we have, I think, probably about half of our expense problem is this pension. Is that correct? Could you just tell me what that shortfall is by year again, and just add them up for the total for the next, I guess, four years we're looking at?
Sure. Mayor and city council? What we did was we did provide, going back to 1987, the city's defined benefit pension contribution, and then also projecting forward from the actuaries, their projections basically through the year 2040, '41. These are based on their estimates. The current year, for the current year we're in, our pension contribution is $1.4 million for the defined benefit plan. For 2011, 10-11, that goes up to $2.4 million. 2011-12, that goes to $3.5 million. 2012-13, $4.6 million. 2014, 17, $5.7 million. So it is a 1, built into our chart was a $1 million addition to our 2% increase each of those years. And then it starts going down, works its way down from that point, down to 2041, where it's about $9,000 contribution. Of course, these are all based on the assumptions that are used by the actuaries, and a lot of it's driven by the market, a portion of it is. We have a 6, 6.5% investment return for the pension plan, which is a little conservative, but it also takes into consideration pay increases and the amount of people who do retire and so forth, on schedule and so forth. But these are based on those estimates. We did have, like most pension plans, and probably not as high as a lot of them, we were just had a report at our last retirement board meeting, that we had a 25% reduction in the value of our assets. That is then spread over, that loss is then spread over five years. We use a five-year smoothing period for that, so 20% of that is counted for the next five years. This year, we'll get our, at our next retirement board meeting, we'll get our September 30th results, and those numbers should be very good. We're looking at probably close to 20% or so, or more. And then that, once again, wherever we end up, we still have a few months left in this year, and we go on a calendar year for our pension plan. It goes on a January through December calendar year. So we'll submit our information again after December 31st, and that'll be recalculated out. We still have a couple of months left, so hopefully the market will continue on the way it's been going lately, and that should help us out a little bit. But once again, we'll only use 20% of that if there are gains over and above the 6.5% over the next five years. We still have that loss, that's going to probably offset that. So we, these are projections based from the actuary, they are reviewed every year, but we did have them go out and provide these estimates for us.
Mr. Zerlag?
If I may add to that, since we're restating the issue of the defined benefit pension plan, at the last meeting when we had this presentation, it was also indicated that the city of Troy is well ahead of the curve, not necessarily with some private sector companies, but with our comparable municipalities. In terms of that, since 1997, we began negotiating in our six labor contracts and requiring with our exempt and classified personnel that all new hires join a defined contribution pension system as opposed to a defined benefit plan. And that in and of itself, as I said earlier, puts us ahead of the curve with other municipalities comparable to Troy and Michigan, as well as mitigates the funding requirements because we did lose 25% of that portfolio. We'd have had all defined benefit personnel instead of the mix of defined contribution and defined benefit, costs have been greater.
Councilman Fleming?
Just to clarify and restate it, understanding the numbers, over the next five years, we're looking at over $15 million, really playing catch-up and trying to smooth out $15 million over the next five years. We will have to, where the city may have not had to put a lot into the plan in the past, we have to ratchet up to make up for the losses that we've had.
A total of $15 million, but it increases $1 million a year for the next five years. But it's already built into that. Looking back in 1987, the city, or 1990, the city contributed $2.7 million, over $2 million in 1987, $2.6 in 1991. So it does go up and down, and it worked its way down to, we had a couple of years where we had no contribution because of our overfunded position.
Right.
And we are still a little overfunded, we're 102% funded in the plan.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Brumfield?
To piggyback that, and I'm just trying to understand it, because there's lots of numbers, and we're all sitting here at almost 11 o'clock trying to absorb it, and we've heard it before, but in layman's terms, the $22 million-ish dollars that is projected as a shortfall over the next five years, am I to assume that of that $22 million that's a shortfall, we lost 25% in the market in our pension fund when everybody lost, everything crashed, that we're trying to make that up to the tune of about $10 million over that next five years? Am I understanding that or not?
No, no. Basically, we have up to $1 million per year, so you're looking at $4 to $5 million over the next five years, there will be an increase in pension contributions.
That's making up the difference of that 25% that crashed?
Well, that's right. That's where our contribution rate is, based on that, and based on their projections and so forth, right.
What I think, and residents ask me, and they say, how did we get here and why is, you know, $6 million and this and that? And I know that the pension plan is a piece of that. You know, we're talking about the library and the museum and looking at our police department, when there's nothing that's happened there that would cause, it's not like we built a new library that now we can't afford, there's nothing that's happened there. It's as if, but it's as if we have to take some of that money and fund the pension plan, so now we're struggling with keeping the library open. Am I understanding that right, Mr. Lamorato?
The pension plan is a minor portion of the overall situation. It's one of the factors. The major factor is the reduction in taxable value. And where it comes, and the industrial and commercial took the biggest hit this next year, 17% reduction.
Right.
Where our commercial and industrial was already at the assessed value, so any decrease in there is going to result in a decrease in revenue. We took a 12% reduction in our taxable value, which, that alone, out of the $6.2 million, 3.9 million of that is due to a reduction in property tax revenue. So the major is property tax revenue reduction. We boast, and it's nice to have, we try to get this 50-50 split, but in this case here, it's actually hurting us more, because we have 43% of our revenue comes from the commercial and industrial base. That took a big hit this year, and it's already at the assessed value.
It's already at the assessed value.
So that just went, that took a major hit. And when it went to the one-year study, that compounded it and really took a hit. We were projecting around 5%, it ends up at about a 12% reduction in our taxable value. That is the biggest hit. The property taxable value, the pension is a portion of it, state shared revenue is another big piece. We had a $1 million hit. State of Michigan could say all they want and how they, because they already adjusted it once during this past year, and now they're saying, oh, well, from that adjustment to our new amount, oh, it's only $700,000. Well, they already took $300,000 earlier in the year. So it's a $1 million hit in our state shared revenue. And who knows where that number is still kind of up in the air right now, the state still hasn't finalized their budget, but right now, it stands at losing $1 million a year. And that puts us, from what our all-time high was, over $2.5 million less per year state shared revenue. So we've had to absorb that. So the major hits are taxable values, a major hit, state shared revenue, and then your pension obligations, which all cities are also facing too.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Another complication that wasn't mentioned now, but we have talked about before. It was not only, we talked about anticipated fees that we thought we would receive revenue from, which turned out not to come for this year, and also obligations that have come, we've come to feel as a burden from the county itself. The county who, shortly after, we experienced a number of snowfalls, simply wasn't going to pay for any more salting or clearing of the streets. The county road commission that informed us midway through the year that they simply had run out of money to fix the county roads. And those are things that we have burdened as a community that were unanticipated and yet cost many, many dollars. Is that not so?
That's correct.
I think that the point in all this discussion and these numbers is that without a 1.9 mil increase, in my viewpoint here, is that the things that, the services that are closest to the residents and the businesses come from the city. And people are expecting to have their services in place. And all these other factors at the county and the state, national level, yes, they are not as impacted as they are by the local services. And the reason why people have chosen Troy years ago, the reason why people are choosing Troy now, the reason why new businesses want to come into Troy, is because of the things that we can offer them. So again, I know that with all of the suggestions that are made by the management team of things that we can tighten our belt more, we've tightened down, we're down 55 people already, we can tighten on budget stabilization fund, we can tighten on capital, we can tighten on all of these things. Still, with all that tightening, we are still going to need a milage increase, which actually, if you look at the chart, ends up not being an increase to the taxpayer because of their tax bill going down over the years.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Eisenbacher, and then Councilwoman Brumfield?
I'm going to change the direction a little bit, and I think Councilwoman Brumfield was on point, potentially.
Oh, I wanted a quick question, then I wanted to say something, but the quick question, I've always wondered to Mr. Lamorato, on our, I believe, $3.8 million to operate the library, I think that's the general number that's been going on, does that figure in the depreciation of the buildings and the personal property? I'm just curious.
Mayor and city council, that does not include any depreciation.
Wow. $3.8 does not figure in the depreciation to operate that library?
Depreciation cost. It includes all utilities, all maintenance, all janitorial.
Right, to operate, to, real money.
Does not include any reserve funds for, we budget any capital funds for improvements, if it's a new air conditioning system or a fire suppression system and so forth, those are budgeted through the capital projects fund when those are needed. If it was a new roof or whatever, that would be through the capital project. We do not include, it's a fund, it's a general operating fund, and a governmental county does not require depreciation of those, and you do not record depreciation on the general governmental type activities. This building, anything that's, only thing that does is water and sewer systems, the golf courses, the aquatic center, so forth, do have depreciation calculated in.
What I wanted to say, to jump in and kick this off, is we have these questions, but when I'm reading Mr. Zerlag's letter on policy questions, we, as a council, have to decide on policy, and these are the choices. And, you know, I have to say, for me, I think that generally speaking, our council all wants the same thing. I don't think there's a person up here who wants the library closed, the museum closed, the community center shut down, and that's a policy issue. I don't know that deciding what to do is necessarily a policy. I think we want that, but I think that we believe that there might be different ways to get there. And let me throw this out, and I appreciate the mayor and her resolution she brought forward. I have to say, when I first read it... resolution she brought forward, I have to say, when I first read it, I probably didn't appreciate you so much, but that's her, that's your thinking on how to arrive, and I think what we all want, okay? This is the problem that I see, and, and I, again, I think we all want the same thing. I want the same thing. For a one point nine, which is the max that the charter will allow us, unless we do a charter amendment, so we're shooting the wad here, and we want to go to our people in February, which isn't that far off, the question is, will it pass? And we can set up here, and we can say, well, if it doesn't pass, we're just going to have to shut down all these things. But the fact of the matter is, if I'm, and I've said this to others, if I'm going to choose to go to war, I want to know that I have a real good chance of winning the battle. And when I see everybody sitting out here, and you all, you, you represent the community, whether you take ten, or fifty, or a hundred, I don't care how many you take, it's extrapolated to the community. And it was very divided tonight, if you heard, it was very divided. And my fear is this, you go in February with a one point nine suggested millage increase, and you're going to have a divided community, and there's a very good chance it's going to fail. Now, if it fails, then what do we do? I'm not interested, when I look it up as, as policy setters, as where we make our decisions, I want to be professional, I want to use our wisdom, I want to talk this thing through, not just throw it out and say, well, let's just do it and see what happens. This has to be timed right, it has to have our ducks in a row. We talk about concessions, Mr. Zerlag, and I know you're working on it, we have had conversations, I know he's trying to get these union contracts open, we talk about privatizing some of our departments, but none of that has happened yet? And so the argument from the people that would oppose that millage increase, especially the one point nine, would be, what have we done at City Hall? I'm not seeing that we've done anything yet. And, and having said that, I, I want to go on record, I want our people to have a voice. I supported the charter amendment, and I will get out there, and I will fight for anybody, even if they disagree with me, to have the right to vote, because you have the right to vote, and we need to take this to the people at some point. I believe that. I am not convinced that one point nine, that the whole wad is the answer, because I believe that when we first started talking, it was one mil. When we first started talking, with one mil raises four point eight million, or four point six million, if my memory serves me correctly, and then you have concessions, and then you privatize. But you go shooting the whole wad and take it to them in February, you're going to lose. And then everybody loses. I really think we need to look long and hard at that.
Someone else? Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
I think the resolution is a bit out of order, insofar as there are things that we have consensus on at this council, that are in the action items, and there's things that we don't have consensus on. In our past discussions, working through, and again, I'm looking at the list on the first page of the manager's report, we spoke in our last meeting, where we could authorize use of the budget stabilization fund, fund balance, and then there was also the note of increasing some administrative fees. There's also discussion of transferring some funds from general capital to general operating. I haven't heard my colleagues speak against these items yet, and these items, if I understood the staff correctly, are not included in the calculations at this time.
That's correct. The, the letter that I had written back in September was predicated on a budget presentation, which indicated that there was a declining revenue line, and what we decided to do was to extrapolate that line to have expenditures meet that declining revenue line, and what we'd have to do if, you know, I can't put it any other way, if the council did nothing, we could not let that revenue line stand, therefore, we had to ratchet down expenditures to one of two options. First, we took away the quality of life departments, eliminated some departments, we privatized and regionalized, and we were still short, so we went to the police department, because that's about half the general fund for internal cost. That's what would have happened, and it was very clear in all the memoranda, if nothing was done. That, if you recall, early on, I said, this issue had three whats. You know, the first what is what is it, and what is it was that we have a declining revenue line. The second what is so what, well, given a declining revenue line, we have an economically unsustainable organization, can no longer operate the way that we have in the past. And then the third what is now what. And the now what had six items to address. One item was employee concessions, that was mine, the other five, that did pertain to a millage increase for a, a general millage election, also a millage increase for a special use like a library, or having a spinoff of our library, to have it be independent of the city, going to use of the fund balance, which would be a, you know, a council action, because I believe your current policy is not to use fund balance, increase administrative fees, and also transferring general capital to general fund, all along, that was an option. All along, I said, if you do that, please leave roads alone, because we currently don't have enough money in general capital to meet our road needs. So that's a long answer to your question, but that's the answer.
Well, if I may consider, continue, Mayor. I didn't hear any opposition from, taking it in order, item number five, I didn't hear any opposition from my colleagues regarding the budget stabilization fund. And from my memory, the idea behind this is, if something happens to our budget, and we're in somewhat of a crisis, this is our, our first level of, of reserves. I believe that a twelve percent drop in commercial property value qualifies for using the budget stabilization fund, and I'm curious if any of my colleagues disagree.
What is the total amount in the budget stabilization fund?
I believe it's two point one million dollars. I also believe that this model already uses three hundred thousand dollars a year toward that fund.
Okay.
Mayor and City Council, we have one point eight, but we had two point one million, we're utilizing three hundred thousand this year, bring it to one point eight. For the next five years, we did factor in using, continuing to use three hundred thousand each of those years already, it's already built into the model.
Okay, is that the interest income, or is that principal?
Just the principal. The interest is already transferred to the general fund each year.
So that one has been decided, then?
Well, we're reckon, or, that's what's in, because we're, it's a continuation of what we did this year, we felt that we would, you know, continue that on for the next five years, and it took a little liberty there, but it's a, we did take three hundred thousand for the next five years there.
Okay. The next item is use of fund balance. I believe at our last meeting, when we spoke about this, and I looked up and down the table, we had consensus that if we reduced it to fifteen percent, that my colleagues would be acceptable of that. And I'm curious if any of my colleagues disagree with that direction.
And what would be the, if it went to fifteen percent, what would that mean as far as dollars that we'd be able to use each year?
For two thousand and ten, eleven, it would be a one point eight million dollars.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you going to ask about the refuse fund?
Well, that's separate from outs, that's outside of all the discussions we're having right now, that's at the end of the model.
Well, it, it is, except that the refuse fund transfer in from general capital was used to balance that fund, and it's going to be worse the next fiscal year. So we need to look at that dollar figure, too, so that when we balance out the dollars, we've looked at everything.
Well, at this point, I'm trying to build some consensus among us.
I know, I'm just asking about that fund.
Not trying to put out the decisive items. I mean, if we want to work together, we can work together, if we want to fight, we can fight, I mean, either way.
I'm not fighting, I'm just asking.
So, and then increase some administrative fees. When I was reading through, I didn't see exactly where that was. I know we've looked at that in the past quite a bit. Do you have any insight in that one?
We, Mayor and City Council, we have built into the model a one to three percent increase in various fees and charges for services already. Now, we can go over, anything over and above that type of increase would generate some additional revenue. We already have a one to three percent increase built in.
Okay. At some point, we increase our fees to the point where people stop using services. So we don't want to reach that point, because that has a bigger detriment than just raising the price. Do we want to have a resolution to say what we're doing on this one, because in the memo, it still says it's open? So you don't want to be clear?
Councilwoman Kirwin?
If I may, in response to Councilmember Eisenbacher, I, I think it merits us building consensus, one point at a time as we go through, and then at the end, see, see where we lead. And to that, I would suggest that we even go back to the couple that we missed, because I think that may, may clear it up. If not two, then maybe three and four. I'd like to share that, well, for example, on four, I personally, and I might. Can you read that? Four, a city council can establish an independent library board, separate from the city of Troy's general fund and levy up to one mil for the operation thereof. I think that we may be able to build consensus on this, I'll, I'll just try it. I personally think that the library is, is core to, to what we're doing. I would not feel comfortable, and I would not support establishing a separate unit of government, which is really what an advisory board, which, which would be sending off a new board to oversee a library with a new millage attracted to that. That's my opinion, and I didn't know whether that would be shared or not.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
Out of the list, that one gave me the most heartburn, because of the fact that seventy-four percent of our residents said in the last city election, that they want to have some input on any tax increases. And this one is passed just by the city council. Right? Yes, that's correct.
If there's an independent library board, some cities have it by charter, where they set their library board separate from the beginning. We have not, it's always been part of our, but it was one of those options, because he was throwing out all the options.
The other thing is, is as soon as we get into allocating for specific items, our flexibility is gone. We could have this great robust library fund, and be forced to cut police officers or fire, or our full-time fire staff, with no control at all by staff or the council. That flexibility is very important, I believe, for, for prioritizing funding.
So Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Kirwin?
I think that that then would not be an option that the majority sitting here would consider, and if that would help staff understand that, neither the separate millage nor the advisory board to oversee that. And I do see that as a core, core service, and we certainly saw it, as Councilmember Eisenbacher will recall, in the futures. The vision included that as a vibrant part. So on those, I would have to say, I'm not interested in. I would have some flexibility, as consensus was built around some of the use of some of the funds, regarding six, the general capital. I do have concerns, it is not the administration's recommendation to dip into that, and I'll tell you, we've heard a lot about roads, we've put more money in roads, and I truly fear the abdication, as I call it, of the responsibility of the county and the state regarding roads which run through Troy, including seventy-five. It's a concern, and I really don't think that we will be able to explain to citizens in the long term, well, the road fell apart, but it really wasn't ours. I think at the end of the day, these are our roads in our city, and certainly, those are services that we may have to shoulder, and some of that money that is reserved there in general capital will in fact have to be used for that purpose. That's my point.
Councilwoman Bellamy?
I have to agree, and, and in large part because I look out in front of my, my house, and nothing affects, in my mind, the value of my house as much as the road in front of it. And the road in front of my house right now is a concrete street with seven asphalt cracks filled in it. And the only people that pay for those local roads are local budgets, we don't get any shared funding on that, so if we don't fund it, nobody else does. And if you're trying to sell your house, and people have to put new tires on their car or get aligned, they're not going to buy your house. So I, I, I think that that is a primary responsibility. But to that, Mr. Cruz, you said that things like that, police and fire, and the library, are different kinds of services, and they are. I disagree with you that the library isn't an essential service, because as we try to retain our residents, and as we try to draw more residents, it is those quality of life value, venues that bring people here, and it is those quality of life values that keep people here. And this isn't the vacation fund, this is the roof where the shingles are already falling off, and there's a difference. And that's how I look at this. So we have to figure out if we want to continue to fund and have the services in some measure of those venues that have become the hallmark of the city of Troy, or if we want to be more like communities that do not have those high-quality services. And it is a community value choice. And I absolutely understand that all seven of us were elected to make decisions, and we're elected to make tough decisions. This is not a tough decision, this is a community value-changing decision, and that decision belongs to the people of Troy, not to a few people who happen to have spent a few thousand dollars to get put in these seats. So I believe that that decision must go to the people of Troy. Now, to that end, Mr. Zerlag, we, I think David's right, we've kind of agreed, use our reserves modestly, so that we can keep them as time goes on. And the question for this council will be, do we want to put a proposal in front of the people of Troy for a maximum allowance to levy? And, and a Troy city council has never levied the maximum allowable, I think that's a bit of history we all need to keep in mind. But does this council want to put a proposal in front of the people of Troy to levy the maximum allowed under the charter? Can we explain that well enough? I think Christina's point was well-taken, to have people make an educated decision on whether or not this is a necessary thing, and, and we will all disagree on which is an essential and which is an unessential service. I just gave you my opinion. But have people agree on what that needs to be. Now, I am, I am very concerned with what your answer to the mayor's question earlier, when she said, if we put this on the August or November election, when would, if, assuming any kind of an increase passes, if that election takes place in August or November of two thousand and ten, that means the eleven, twelve budget is the first time that those funds could be utilized. That's right?
That's my understanding, yes.
So we're still looking at seven and a half, seven and three-quarters of a million dollars that we've got to find in the next eighteen months.
We can't find it.
And, and while I agree that there are probably cuts that can still be made, I know that you will continue. you will continue to work with the employees. I'm not sure that we want to make those seven and a half million dollars of cuts and then try and figure out how to save our reputation and the brand and everything else. I also, I guess it's a question for the city clerk. Wait a minute, before I go to that, still, you on the hot seat.
Good night.
You talk about privatization and collaboration of departments and those sorts of things. If we have to have language for a special election by the 15th of December, can you have more definitive information for us by that date on those operations?
Yes, I can, as long as I can define definitive information. What I'm doing is I've assembled a team of Dick Carlisle, our planning consultant who also owns Carlisle-Wortman. He has about 25 municipal clients where he performs to varying degrees. His firm does a privatization of planning and building and zoning services. Dick has a global perspective. He's going to help us primarily with the team of Mr. Lamorato, Mr. Miller, and Ms. Sears to be the core. And they would work with each department to develop specifications for what I would call a hybrid. It's not going to be a complete privatization of any department. We're too large to go from top to bottom and have an outside private sector form that function. That's my opinion, but I'll get that either reinforced or modified when the team gets together and gets more definitive. But they've already been charged with developing specifications to go out to determine what the savings would be for privatization of various departments. And I'll always give employees an opportunity to compete with what we receive. Step one would be to actually determine the level of service that we wish to achieve. And I'll do that and then show the governing body that specification. I don't think we should ever have any darkened counters, but there may be a time when there'll be more of a level of service than other times depending upon that service. So, the short answer is yes, because I'm working with the team to develop specifications at a level of service for the private sector to determine what the cost would be to provide that service.
So, is it your thought that the RFP, if you would, would be generated by December 15?
Yes.
I mean, Jim, we're only talking like eight weeks.
Don't have, wouldn't have a response by then, but we would have our specifications well in hand.
So, you would have an expected level of service and an expected cost that we would be, in essence, willing to pay for that level of service?
I'd have an expected level of service, an indication of what our current cost is to do the work in-house, and then ask private sector firms or firms to submit a proposal that would correlate that level of service with a cost. And again, it would not be a hard number in terms of we're going to save 36.7% because the specification will be based on a level of service. Hopefully, we'll get more hits on certain inspection engineering functions than what we may identify. And that would have a modification on the comparison. But again, the short answer is by December, we'll have a spec ready, not for all departments, but for at least a couple of them with a level of service and have them sent out to private sector in terms of what they can do for us.
Now, for the clerk, if I would-
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Beltrame.
What happens if Mr. Zerlik brings us his information and this council says, you know what, I don't think we're ready? Can we pull the plug, if we have to, on that special election as long as we do it before the 15th of December?
The actual filing of the ballot language must be to the county clerk on the 15th of December. Between now and that time, it needs to go before a couple of different places and be vetted. And the short answer is yes, it can be pulled up until the 15th of December.
I'm not looking to do that, but if we're uncomfortable, I agree with Christina that if we don't have the right information, we should not expect people to make a decision. I agree with that. And the result of that is if we don't work fast enough and if you don't work fast enough, we're making seven and a half million dollars in cuts in the next 18 months. That's the alternative. And maybe not that. We take 1.8 out of fund balance and, okay, so, we're down to six. Madam Mayor?
Yes, was that which? Councilwoman Kirman?
Except some of it's built in. I mean, I think, again, when we come up with the numbers, it's almost like the time we sat around the table and we were going, okay, well, we got a little bit here, a little bit there. Some is built in on the if, and so, I just want to bear that in mind. Then I just have a couple of things. One is a point of personal privilege. It's difficult to hear in general and we are, I am distracted by the conversation in the chambers. And it's fine if people want to go out, as I see some talking out there, but it truly is distracting to governance to have to hear, to try to hear when I hear conversation that's ongoing. So, please, Madam Mayor, if you can, from time to time, control the chamber. One point that I really wanted to bring up, it's been bothering me and I'm just going to share it, is DPW. The idea of privatizing DPW. Tonight, we recognized members from DPW, did we not?
Yes, ma'am.
And if I understand you, I hope I understand you correctly, Mr. Manager. Again, I'm just one. That it would be only privatizing if, in fact, the service could be done at this level? Or are you not saying this?
No, I'm not saying that. In terms of public works, well, the general preamble-
Let me finish and then you can respond. I am very concerned about this. I appreciate very much the work at DPW. I think that it's inherent to any city. So, I've seen it on here and I've entertained it, but as we go through to try to reach consensus about where we are on some of these things, I have to tell you, this concerns me. Thank you.
Two-pronged answer, if you don't mind. One is an example. And we can already point to the planning department where that's a hybrid privatization department. Last year, we had five full-time people there. We had a planning director, a principal planner, CAD analyst, a planner and a secretary. We now have a director and a secretary that's full-time. We utilize a consultant that comes in in the capacity of an advisor to the planning director, two days a week, two half-days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays. If someone comes to the counter in the old days and needed the service of a principal planner, there was a planner there. If they come in now on Monday, we may say, well, you know what, come on back tomorrow morning. That's when the person will be there. We save over six figures a year compared to five full-time people. But we don't have the level of service that we used to have, not close. So, when you privatize, that's not the be-all, end-all. What it does is it takes departments that kind of have the service level that's on-demand and pays a company to come in and try to flatten out that line, but not on a 24-hour, not on an eight-hour-a-day basis, five days a week. Along the same lines, in the public works department, we currently have an excellent set of workers and the general fund portion is primarily street and road maintenance, guard rail maintenance as well. We have the best protocol in terms of cleaning our 300 miles of roads, including county roads, I think in the entire state of Michigan. After a four-inch snowplow or snowfall, about all of our 300-plus miles of streets are cleaned. Well, I can speak with confidence that if we had that same spec go out to the private sector, it would cost more money to plow all those streets within 24 hours. You can't do it. Not only that, but the folks that come in won't know the streets, so we'll have fire hydrant damage, we'll have signs taken down, we'll have mailboxes taken down. So, the answer is no. There would not be the same level of service if we partially privatized the public works department, but it would be cheaper. You wouldn't have the roads cleaned in time in terms of snow removal, but it would be cheap. And we'll find out what that cheaper cost is against a certain level of service and you can decide if you want to realize that savings or not.
Mayor? Councilwoman Brumfield?
Two questions. First question is Councilwoman Beltrame asked about the idea of city management coming back with some information before the December 15 cutoff and how much could you bring us in terms of privatizing and what the savings would be? Can you also come back and bring us contracts in hand for concessions by December 15?
That would be a two-party solution and I'm only one party. I can't guarantee someone to agree to a concession. I can try to make them, not make them forcibly, but I can try to have concessions made with the varying, various labor groups, but I can't guarantee an outcome. All I can do is work in that regard.
In your professional opinion, do you think it's feasible?
What I've heard is that the groups of employees in the City of Troy would be more amenable to concessions if they knew the governing body was going to ask the voters if they will decide what level of service they want. Quite frankly, a concern is that there would be concessions given and the council would say, thanks for the concessions, cut these three projects and let's rock and not go to the voters to see if they wanted a millage increase. That's a hurdle that I have. But I will indicate that I will work with the varying labor groups for concessions. The answer for privatization is a little more difficult. We've already baked in a 40% savings in our model to privatize and regionalize. I have memoranda from two private sector firms indicating that the 40% rate that we used is probably a good number. But by December, I won't have an accurate number. I mean, it'll take me over, if I had a bid come in, it would still take a year to audit what our actual costs were based on the level of service against what it had cost us before we laid off employees that used to perform the work. So, you're still going to get a guess on the privatization. I mean, I'll let you know that there's a due diligence going on in terms of having my team fashion the spec and talking to other members of the private sector, but I'm not going to come back by December and say, here we go. We're going to, I can guarantee the savings. It'll always be an estimate.
Can I follow up with one other question?
Sure.
If I might, Mr. Ray. A May vote, is that allowed, Ms. City Clerk?
The May date is open for election. However, it does not work with the July 1st tax bill and budgeting, is my understanding, but a May election is a possibility.
So, if I understand, what I'm trying to do is make something work so that it works versus doing something that's going to, it's going to not pass. So, a May vote, would a May vote follow the same tax collectible as the August vote?
Yes.
It wouldn't be any sooner?
No.
Wouldn't a May vote, I think a May vote would be that July, July 10.
But the budget adoption issue comes-
Yeah, but the budget, but a May vote would, if it passed, would allow for collection sooner than an August or November vote?
Correct.
But it passes the budget time. When is the, John, Mr. Lamorato?
I'm not sure when the May vote is.
I believe it's May 4.
May 4? Well, you have to have the budget adopted by the third Monday in May. Not knowing the outcome, you basically have to develop two different types of budgets. One, if it were to pass, one if it were not to pass, basically. It's a possibility.
Further, Councilman Plumb?
I think we've made more progress tonight than we've had in previous meetings, especially on items four, five and six.
You can't?
We've made more progress tonight than we have in previous meetings, especially on items four, five and six. From your September the 9th memo, Mr. Zerlik, we've decided, one, that we don't want an independent library board and a separate mill. And I think we all nodded on that. We're in agreement. We didn't vote, but we nodded. And I think that's all we can do in this session. On item number five, we've agreed that the council is authorizing, I think with a nod, the Budget Stabilization Fund and the fund balance and increase in administrative fees. So, you're already using $300,000 out of the Budget Stabilization Fund. We basically nodded in 2010, 2011, let's use 1.8 million per year fund balance. That's going in the right direction. Administrative fees, we talked anywhere from 1% to 3%. We nodded. We don't know what those are, but that's another step. Okay? Then we kicked around the idea in item number six, general capital to general operating. And what I heard this council say is, whatever we do, we won't take money out of capital for the roads. We want to leave $5 million in the roads. We didn't get into the nitty-gritty details as to where we could use some of the capital funds and there's other things left. Just example, could be vehicles. We could extend the life of the vehicles that we have or something, not have as many vehicles, so forth. There are still a number of things we can do in the general capital that we've not explored here tonight and I don't think we will, but things that we can do. But we're making steps in the right direction. The other thing that's been clarified tonight for I think everybody was a misconception by some that we had to make a vote tonight and had to decide on October the 19th in order to meet February ballot date. That's been clarified. We're looking at December the 15th. There was some misinformation out there, so I hope that's being cleared up. Now, we're talking about what happens if we wait until May. I'm going to weigh in on this right now. I'm telling you, I agree with Councilwoman Brumfield. If we rush this and if we don't do a due diligence and we're doing it right now, this is a work in process. It's not going to happen overnight. We need some more time because we've made little progress tonight. If we put this before the voters, and I will weigh in and say, I think at the end of the day, once we do our due diligence and do our homework, we're still going to need to go to the voters. And the voters need to decide and I don't want to take that right away from anybody. And if there's misinformation out there about what I believe, let's clear it up. We will need to hear from the voters and want to hear from the voters, but we need to know what we're asking for. We're moving in the right direction here tonight. I think the meetings you're having with the staff, that's going to be tremendous and have a tremendous impact. If you can come back in December or November or whatever, Mr. Zerlik, with more concrete, definitive, you know, concessions, what that looks like and put a dollar figure, that will speak volumes to our citizens and I think they'll be more open and receptive. But this quick reaction to try to do something tonight, I think, could really backfire on us. And that's from going door-to-door, talking to a lot of people. We hear a lot of input tonight and you're right, we've got mixed signals. Whatever we do as a council, I think when we come together, it's just like when we hire a city manager. We need to be unanimous because whatever we do as a council is the future of this city and this, on this major, major, important thing we're talking about here, this budget, what we decide to do. And if we decide to go to the people, it needs to be unanimous. I hope it can. I hope we can come together on that. And I'm willing to do it, but not tonight, not at this meeting to say, we need to put this on the ballot in February. I think we need to continue to do our homework, do our due diligence, come back with a plan more definitive. We've had a lot of information that people shared with us tonight, their opinion. We need to sort through that and determine, okay, is there something we haven't uncovered? Is there another avenue to look at this? And we will discover things as we go forward. We don't know all of it. The staff doesn't either. We've made some steps- We've made some steps in the right direction, but we're not there yet. But I'm telling you what, I shudder to think what would happen if we put this out there now for a vote in February. We could be in real trouble, real trouble, and I don't want to be premature in doing that. I think the timing is just not right. We need to continue to do our homework, and I think we are doing a lot of work, and I applaud you for doing that. But let's keep working at it. I think it's just, it would be a mistake to try to rush this through tonight.
Mayor? Who's taken? I don't know if it was Councilwoman Beltramini.
No, that's all right.
Councilman Eisbecker?
In trying to build consensus, item six on the list, I think there's two parts of this, if I'm understanding staff correctly. Staff was talking about monies that we already have allocated for capital projects such as the transportation center, trails, and roads, monies that are already set aside. And then there's the ongoing capital revenue from the millage rate. I believe those are separate, because we could switch some of the millage that's not being used for roads, because I heard consensus among us that we don't wanna cut roads because, just like Councilwoman Beltramini said, the road in front of my house fell apart very badly, and it makes the whole neighborhood look bad. We don't wanna cut out road maintenance, but everything else gets a very high level of scrutiny. And we wanna transfer, I believe it's in our interest to transfer as much of that capital funding revenue into general fund. Not the currently allocated amounts.
How much would that be?
We don't have that number yet.
Mr. Zurelek?
Just for clarification, in my letter, I have three categories: infrastructure, economic development, and quality of life for capital projects. Are you saying that if we take a look at the economic development and quality of life improvements, and not infrastructure?
I'm saying new allocations, absolutely. Additional funding to existing allocations, absolutely, or additional funding. It's like we put forth two million dollars for a trail system.
Right.
If we don't get a big giant match for that, I have a very hard time saying we need to move forward with that, because part of the reason we allocated that money was in expectation, just like our mile roads, that it's something like an eighty-twenty.
Sure, I believe one of your, one of our objectives in our budget document is to leverage capital funds to obtain grants.
New projects that aren't on the table now, I would say no way.
Except roads.
But I don't, except roads.
Infrastructure.
Mayor?
Well, yes, Councilwoman Broomfield?
I think that number, if I'm not, if I'm right in reading what you have here, Mr. Zurelek, is four point four million? The three projects that you mentioned that were not roads, improvements?
That's correct. The transit center, trail system, and civic center reserve came to four point four million.
See, I guess, you know where I have such heartburn? I have such heartburn talking about closing down our library and our museum and all of that, when we have four and a half million sitting there for these projects that while they're good projects, they can be put on hold. And, you know, it's like everybody is scared to death, running scared, but the library can stay open and the museum, I mean, I wanna say that because I believe it to be true. I think that there's other things that we haven't looked at. You know, we do have ten and a half million dollars in our undesigned funds, and I will tell you, again, if this body makes a decision, whether I'm here or not, to put a ballot question out, I believe it needs to be with the intention of saying to our residents, "We need it." Not something that we're so divided on, or let's just see if it passes. It's with the intention that we've done all this stuff, and we need this one mill, or whatever it might be. It needs, that's just the right way to do it, and I think we have to look at these corner or these areas and stop talking about the library and the museum when we have this other stuff to draw from, but still show the public that we are doing the concessions and we are, you know, the trails, the trail group, you know, they come here, they're good people, and they're gonna be hugely disappointed. But now it's disappointing if we close down the library, you know, and they will be vocal about it, which will send a message out to the rest of our residents, so that should a mill increase go to the vote of the people, the people will pass it, because they'll want the trails. And they understand that we don't have the money to do that. The goal here is this, if we're gonna put it on the ballot, make sure you got a pretty good idea that it's gonna pass. That's the goal.
I need to weigh in here, since I was the one that proposed the resolution tonight, and I did it for several reasons. I did it mostly because I was hearing from people in the community saying we need to have a vote on the millage question, based on all the facts and data that they've been able to read and all of this material that we've received, and I brought it all tonight from all of our meetings. Secondly, this is the first time that this council, from each and every single person that's sitting up here, and even Martin's sitting here, he'd say it too, that we could even talk about a millage. It's been forbidden. Oh, we can't talk about a millage. So I think that we've made progress. I'm not naive enough to know, to think, that this particular council was going to vote tonight to put it on the February ballot, but I did wanna get a healthy discussion going, and I did want everybody to face up to the facts that, yes, there isn't enough money. When you keep hearing the money numbers, even with all these things that we're proposing doing, still gonna be something that's necessary there. I don't believe that our management would even put that down as a suggestion if they didn't feel that it was absolutely necessary. When you compare our management to other communities, we have top-notch people, everybody will say that, county government, state government, everybody will say that. And so we've had residents that have picked on our staff because they're telling us the truth, and they picked on me for bringing it up. But that's all right, I can take the hits, because I believe in this community, and I believe in the fact that if it's proven to the voters that it's necessary to have a millage that will increase but not cost them any more money because of the decrease in the value of their homes, that they will vote for it. I truly believe it in this community, and we do need to protect our infrastructure, which is the lifeblood of this community, and the people that keep that up. Police and fire, definitely, because that, people won't stand for not having good service there, and they truly love our quality of life, things that draw not only residents in, but businesses into the community. So I really do believe in it, but I'm glad to hear the give and take in the discussion, that it's finally happening with the council. So I do wanna commend all of you for that. Councilman Fleming?
We're having this good discussion and so forth, but we don't know until we do this due diligence what we need to ask for, and we still don't know if it's going to pass, but I think we got a much better chance if we do the due diligence first, you know, okay, and then we hear from the people. But right now, at least we're having the discussion, but we simply don't know what we need to ask for now, what needs to come before the people. But the end of the day, three priorities, police, fire, road, safety, that's gotta be it. And there'll be people in the community that they don't care about the library. I think most of the people do. I want to see the library stay open, museums stay open, everything stay open. It may look a little differently, you know, but I'm not up here wanting to see anything closed, but I tell you what, we just, we're starting to do our homework now. Let's keep it up. We can't let up now, and let's move forward.
Councilman Purwin?
Two years ago, we received a white paper from our city manager, which showed that what we have now is unsustainable. This is not a surprise that we're here tonight, and my concern is, I hear, well, we could pull from this and pour a couple million here, we could try that, and we could get by a little bit farther, is that we're still not providing the structure for the services which this community appreciates. And I think from that big-picture perspective, we still need to look at that. We can't approach this as Lansing so often does, with kind of pushing a little bit here and pushing a little bit there and kicking the can down the road. If we really want to provide the kinds of roads we've talked about, at five million, which it takes just to get it back up to the okay status, we need to be forward-looking. We need to provide that structure and the opportunity for the voters to consider them. So as much as we wanna be cautious and have due diligence, we also have to bear that in mind. Secondly, I think it's really important, as much as I hear my colleagues talking about the concessions, the concessions, the concessions, I did hear the manager say that what the employees are looking at is the will of this council. They are reluctant to come forward with concessions until there's trust built on this party that the sustainability will continue. If not, it is an endless cliff. In fact, I think that off the cliff was an editorial headline today describing Bloomfield Township facing the same situation as we had. At this point, I'd like to again salute the city manager and staff for bringing this forward now, so that we can look forward, not just for the next-year folks, but he brought it forward for two years, so we can look at both and the six-year plan, but specifically for the next two years as we plan. And I'm telling you, we can't pull a couple from here and a couple from there, pour it in and say, "I'm done." I don't think that will create a sustainable structure that we need and desire in this community.
Mayor? Yes, Councilman Eisbecker?
To say this bluntly, with our revenue stream, as long as property values are dropping, there is no sustainability in our revenue. There is no sustainability unless you're willing to raise taxes every year automatically. A one-time increase doesn't provide sustainability when our costs increase every year and our property values decrease every year. So either we've gotta get our costs under control so that two percent increase that's predicted by our staff every year, no matter what, is not a two percent, or we need to figure out a different funding mechanism so that, so that as property values come down, we're not going to the voters every year and asking for a tax increase. I also wanted to say a few things regarding, we talked a little bit about the February election. I think there's four deadly faults if we proceed with a February election. The first one is that people won't know that their property tax bill is going down, and that their monthly mortgage payments, if they have their property tax as part of their mortgage payments, is going to be reduced. They won't know that in February, and I believe a large portion of our population will be in the show-me mindset. Show me a price reduction in my taxes before I go out and give you an increase. Second, in the private sector, the best statistics I've been able to find is that for salaried people, it's been a six percent cut average for salaried people, and for hourly people, the average work week is around, right around thirty-three hours. The job loss in Michigan, we are at a, there's a little bit variation in the different statistics, but right around a fifteen percent unemployment rate. And if you take the people that are discouraged and have stopped looking for jobs, that gets you to a twenty percent unemployment rate. So asking people that have had to go through substantial pay cuts, hourly cuts, and/or are laid off is very difficult. Third one, in February, there's a lot of our residents that are out of town, avoiding our cold weather, a lot of retirees out of town. We don't want to be giving absentee ballots without a lot of information explaining what cuts the city has done, explaining what the city has gone through to these people who aren't in the community at the time of the election. And the fourth one, this one may be the most contentious, is our residents just watched a major intersection in Troy, major project, Big Beaver in Rochester, where we tore out perfectly good concrete, interrupted traffic for weeks, just to replace it with red concrete. I mean, you say we're broke, but then all the residents are watching this project, which was not critical. I visited another community recently, and their solution for adding the ADA, Americans with Disabilities, color mats, was to adhere them onto the existing concrete, not tear out the existing concrete and replace it with an embedded ADA-compliant pad. Those four items, I think, will seriously impact the ability to get a millage in February. And then, okay, let's say we do it in February, and it doesn't pass. Does that mean we're gonna automatically go back in August or November and not take the message from the voters? Or do we wanna have enough information out there so that the people know that their taxes actually went down, not their rate, but their taxes paid went down, and the economy has stabilized more? Second, we talked quite a bit about Oakland County. They went into this crisis mode well before us, and they've been successful thus far at making the cuts and still providing their services. And I'm curious what our city manager's interpretation is about how they're doing it differently from us to work through this crisis without a tax increase, where our first item, or one of our main items, is the tax increase.
While he's explaining that, maybe he could also talk about the fact that Big Beaver and is a county road, and what the, who actually did that project there?
Yeah, DDA. I think I scratched your, that was a DDA project, and I can provide some background on that, how it was bid and so forth, and the reasons therefor. There's a Downtown Development Authority meeting coming up Wednesday, and the primary function is to indicate where we are with the DDA in terms of its reduced revenue line and to reexamine some projects that are slated for improvements, with quite possibly putting a hold on those projects. The issue of how the Oakland County government is providing services, I don't know the answer to that, but I do know some people that are in the hierarchy of the organization, I'll be happy to give them a call, find out what they're doing, what cuts have been made, what concessions have been made, and how they are faring. Last meeting, again, we had a, and I know you've had a lot of slides, but we're looking at a possible reduction of one hundred and sixty-nine people, which is more than fifteen percent of our workforce, regardless of any millage increase or not, because we'll be looking at privatization and regionalization and just organizational-wide layoffs. Results from that.
Mr. Ammarado?
Just, also mayor and city council, as far as one of the points that was made, just to get the correct information out there also, is that the residents will know what their taxable value will be before the February election. The notices go out in the middle of February, the election is near the end of February. So a few days and not the absentees.
So a few days and not the absentees?
What was that? I didn't hear.
The election would be a few, a week, two weeks, a few days after the tax bills go out, assuming typical mailing.
The notice has come out here, you're right, by the middle of February the 15th, so that would give you eight days. There's another issue at hand there, and unfortunately I hadn't had a chance to discuss this with Mr. Lamarrato yet, but Oakland County and about 90% of the communities, excuse me, in the state use the Equalizer Assessing System. On printing the assessment change notice, there is an option to print what an estimation of the reduction in taxes would be for that particular year. Oakland County has opted to use that this year for the communities where they're the assessor. The problem with that is that it's overall millage rate. So while it might tell someone, you know, their taxes are going to go down $1,800 and maybe 170 of that or $200 of that is city taxes, there's no way to separate that out. What it does is it gives you an estimate of the total reduction in taxes. The concern at that point would be that that would be lobbying, since most of Oakland County's communities do not have an election coming up. If we had an election coming up eight days afterwards, and I put on the assessment notice that your taxes are going to go down, you know, $2,200, and they're going to think that's all city taxes. So again, that's not something we had discussed yet, but it is an option that's available. And again, to make clear, the notices do have to be out by the middle of February, so a minimum of eight days ahead of that time. And we do hear from quite a few of the people in Florida and Arizona who write into the Board of Review to protest in writing, so they're aware of what that tax notice says to them.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Bloomfield?
And as you bring that up, again, I go back, I know I sound like I'm repeating myself, but I'm going to keep beating this horse because a tax increase doesn't help us at all if it doesn't pass. And we talk about potential February vote, same time everybody gets their tax bill. I mean, think about that for a minute. They may not be looking for that little bit of savings, they're just looking at a $4,500 or $38 or whatever that is, and then they're asking. And you know, it's about educating them and getting that information out so it will pass. Councilwoman Kerwin mentioned about, you know, trust to council. It's about, for instance, the employees partnering, becoming a partner with council to work through concessions, knowing that we're doing the very best we can, and it will probably go to the vote of the people at some time. But I guarantee you, if you don't take it when it's going to be more likely to pass, if you've got the division that we saw tonight, there's going to be groups out there on both sides, and they're going to be sending back messages out that are tweaked or exaggerated or whatever, and we will not be successful. I know I keep saying that, and I'm wearing you out here, it's almost midnight. But if we're going to do this, if we're going to do a tax increase or a millage increase, we've got to do it as a council when we think it's the best timing.
I guess I'm in charge.
And the right amount.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Two steps.
I guess I'm in charge. Anybody else want to weigh in? I mean, I guess I go back to, that was the thing that was great about April elections.
I can't hear.
That was what was great about April elections, which then we all knew what the bill was. So now we're stuck with this system, thanks to the state of Michigan, and it makes it My dent in this is, I want to, I guess, you know, pretty much we agree that there are more cuts that we could make, and I guess the first thing is, Mr. Zurlag, and I can't direct you to put a resolution on, but you did get consensus on using the Budget Stabilization Fund and being able to increase fees and taking the unreserved fund balance down to 15%. And I think we speak through resolutions, and the sooner you can put those in a form of a resolution to give yourself direction, the better off you'd be. So that would be the first thing. And then we have to look at other ways to move millages. But I agree with Councilwoman Kerwin when she said, you know, that's how we lost the million dollars in state shared revenue this year, is a shell game being played with money. So I go back to, is it important to the citizens of Troy to have the community-building lifelong learning assets that have become our hallmark? And if we believe that that is a value to many of our community, we need to let them weigh in on that as soon as possible. And so I am really torn about just sitting on our hands once again, particularly if we have another option.